For everyone to be seated, we will now start the public hearing. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Solongo, and I am David Rosacker, Vice Chair. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up right here at this table. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial in nature. Therefore, we will read and vote on without the opportunity of your testimony. If you do wish to testify on any of these consent cases, you may remove the case from the agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants that case removed. If you do, please stand and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones at this time. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. We'll now take the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is item number two. Case C-3-22-158. Applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, and it's on for approval, request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law laid over 6122 and 7622. Location is 2230, 2216, 2212, 2210, 2208, and 2204 Ohio Street. Does anyone wish to remove this from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Item number three, case C-10-21-325, C-12-21-326. Applicant Woodsonia 216 Fort LLC. It's on for approval. Request is revised preliminary plat approval of the Haven, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. This case was laid over from the 61 meeting. Location is southwest of 216th and Fort Streets. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four. Case C-10-22...
Four is not a consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to get more on there.
Yeah.
Case number six. Applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, it's on for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. The location is 3201, 3205, 3209, 3213, 3217, 3221, Corby Street. Anyone wishing to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Item number seven, case C-322-229. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Locations 2512 North 22nd Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Item number thirteen. Case C-12-22-205, Callaway Homes, on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of the posh acres, a minor plat outside city limits with a waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks, and the location is northeast of 234th and State Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Case number fourteen, C-12-22-207. Applicant CK Acquisition Company LLC, on for approval. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of MH Landing Replat 2, a minor plat inside city limits. Property is located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location is northeast of 70th and Grover Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Case number sixteen. C-10-22-210, C-12-22-211. Applicant Cassie Innis, MRS Square Owner LLC, on for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Bartlet's Addition to Omaha Replat 7, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from CC and NBD to NBD. Property is located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. The location is southwest of 30th and Leavenworth Street. Anyone wishing to see this removed? Seeing none. Item number eighteen, case C-10-22-214. Applicant Community Alliance, on for approval. Request approval of the ACI 265 area of civic importance overlay district. Location is 7130 Arbor Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Number nineteen. Case C-10-10-122 and C-10-22-215. Applicants Gerald Reimer, Urban Village, on for approval, and request rezoning from DS to TOD to MX with repeal of the ACI 1 area of civic importance overlay district. Location is 1508 Marcy Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Number twenty. Case C-10-22-216. Applicant Reverend Diana Cool, Shepherds of the Hills Lutheran Church, is on for approval. Request rezoning from R6 and R8 to R6 with approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location is 6201 North 60th Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Case number twenty-one. C-10-22-218. Applicant Ben Shu, BGIN USA, on for approval. Request is repeal of the ACI area civic importance overlay district at the location east of 6th and Marcy Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. We'll move to number twenty-four. Case C-11-22-044. Applicant Woodsonia 3902 Dodge LLC, it's on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location is 3902 Dodge Street. Anyone wishing to see this case removed? Seeing none. Case, or number twenty-five. Case C-8-22-221. Applicant Tim Hughes, Second Mile Inc., on for approval. Approval of a special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled, in the R4 district. Location is 5608 Blonto Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Okay, number twenty-five is removed from consent. This case will be heard in its regular order, and then you can testify at that time. Okay, moving on to number twenty-six. Case C-8-05-175. Location is 12221 Rainwood Drive, or Road, excuse me. I'm sorry, that's the applicant. Applicants 12221 Rainwood Road Properties LLC, the, is on for approval. Request is approval of major amendment to a special use permit to allow non-petruscable landfill in the AG district. Location is southwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Number twenty-seven. Case C-8-22-222. Applicant Adam Raymakers, Forge Building Group, on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a recreational club in the R6 district. Location is 16402 Pinkney Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none. Item number twenty-eight. Case C-7-22-223. Applicant Alliance Sports Training, it's on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district. Property is located within the FF flood fringe overlay district. Location is 11212 Chicago Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number twenty-nine. Case C-7-22-224. Applicant Action Academy, on for approval. Request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow primary educational facilities in the CC district. The property is located within the FF flood fringe overlay district. Location is 11212 Chicago Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number thirty. Case C-7-10-070. Applicant Ryan Lindquist, EPS Elkhorn High School, on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the DR district. Location is 1401 Veterans Drive. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number thirty-one. Case C-14-22-225. On behalf of the Planning Board, case is on for layover. Request is vacation of a portion of Sergeant Street between 34th and 35th Streets. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number thirty-two. Case C-14-22-226. Applicant Planning Board, on for approval, and request is vacation of a portion of Brown Street located east of 13th Street. Any further discussion by the city?
I just want to reiterate before we vote, all of those cases that were just read, we had the one that was pulled off and will be heard at the regular spot in the agenda, but all those other cases that were just read will be voted on and not discussed any further today. So I just want to make sure to give everyone that chance in case any others were to be pulled off. Okay? I don't see any.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items for approval. Items 2, 3, 6, 7, 13, 14, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 24, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 32.
Debbie, would you record the vote?
Uh, Franklin?
Uh, yes.
More?
I'm gonna recuse myself from number six.
Okay. Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Do we have a motion for the layover cases?
Motion to layover, item number thirty-one.
Sir.
Debbie, record the vote.
Uh, Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Franklin? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay, the next case will be administrative only, which means there's no testimony. This is item number one, case C-10-21-47 and C-12-21-48. Applicant is Woodsonia 168 State LLC. The request is final plat approval of the Hill lots 394, 396, and Outlots M through Zero. A subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R6 and MU. Location is northeast of 168 and State Streets. May we hear from the city?
Yeah, so this is the third phase of the Hill. It includes three lots and two outlots. The three, the three lots, basically, there's two mixed-use lots for office commercial development, and then one mixed-use lot intended, or R6 zone lot for multifamily. There, there'll need to be a few notes added to the final plat, a few mixed-use items that'll need to be finalized in the mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding to City Council, but staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU subject to smittle of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding to City Council, and approval of the final plat subject to the four conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any other comments by the Board? If not, do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU, subject to smittle of an acceptable mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding to City Council, and approval of the final plat of the Hill subject to meeting the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay, now, the following cases will then have public testimony on each one of them. So, the first one we move to would be number four, which is C-10-22-182, C-10-22-183, C-12-22-184. Applicant Denise Geringer, Sheltering Tree Inc. The request is preliminary plat approval of Purple Martin Hill, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R6, along with expansion of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district for a portion of the site. This case was laid over from our July meeting. The location is northwest of the 180th Street and Purple Martin Parkway. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Denise Geringer, 406 Black Forest Drive. There we go. Denise Geringer, 406 Black Forest Drive, Pavilion, Nebraska. I'm here representing Sheltering Tree. I am the executive director. Along with me today is John Coolidge from Lamprey Nearest, who is able to answer any questions that you might have. From last month, we were able to hold our neighborhood meeting on July 20th. Neighbors attended. PJ Butler from the Planning Department was in attendance as well. That went well. The other concern from last month's meeting has been addressed, and I don't believe there's any concerns. We've been recommended for approval, so we appreciate your support, and I'm welcome any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the applicant? Any other proponents? Any opponents? Okay, public hearing is, is closed. We hear from the city.
Uh, yeah, you know, we discussed most of the details in, in depth last month, and also in the pre-meeting as a, as a recap. I don't think I need to get into any of those unless you do have specific questions. The western half 48 units for the Sheltering Tree organization, and then the eastern half would be zone DR MCC with specific development unknown at this time for that side. So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R6. Approval of the MCC overlay for Lot 2. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 21 conditions in the recommendation report.
Any comments from the Board? Otherwise, can I have a recommendation?
A motion for the approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R6. Approval of the MCC overlay for Lot 2. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following 21 conditions.
Second.
Debbie, would you record the vote, please?
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
The next case is number five. The Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request is approval of the 2023 and 2028 CIP, City of Omaha and Three Mile Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. May we hear from the city? Alex?
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Alex Johnson. I work at the City Planning Department. The capital improvement program, six-year program that coordinates Go Bond Funds, so our general obligation bond funds in addition to capital projects through various different departments, the Public Works, Environment, Parks Department, and coordinate all of those projects and prepare a 190-page document for all of you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. Any other proponents that need to speak? Any opponents? If not, we hear from the city.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. Of course, it's a collaborative effort with all the departments in the city, you know, starting back in January and February. A lot of meetings, a lot of projects that get prioritized, ultimately determined by the mayor, and presented to City Council last week with the city budget. So, staff, I guess I'll just add that it's compliant with the master plan, and staff recommends approval.
I'll just make a comment, this, you know, out here in the, in the audience don't really see the gravity of this, this, this document that's presented. It's a massive document, hundreds, if not thousands, of hours that go into this, but it's, it's a backbone of all the things we do in this city to keep it improved the way we like it, so. Any discussion from the council or from the Board? Or entertain a, a motion?
I move approval of the proposed 2023 through 2028 capital improvement plan.
Second. Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Solongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay, the next one is number eight, and we're gonna hear this together with number fifteen. They, they are in the same location. I'll read the two, uh, two applications, and then we'll discuss them through that. Number eight is C-3-22-197. Applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request is approval of the 151 Mike Fahey Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan, and the location is southwest of 15th and Mike Fahey Streets. And then number fifteen is case C-10-22-208, C-12-22-209. Applicant Ted Zetsman, Nodle BD1 LLC. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Builders District 3, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located in ACI area of civic importance overlay district. The location is, again, is southwest of 15th and Mike Fahey Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, City staff, I'm Jay Nodle with Nodle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. We're really pleased to be here today. This is the continuation of a vision that was really created about seven years ago to create a neighborhood sandwiched between Creighton, the Mecca facilities, and the developments happening on the north side of Cummings, now called the Builders District. To date, there's been approximately 200 million in investment completed in the neighborhood, and we are embarking upon the next round of development. We believe now that, based on where we are in the world with construction costs and so forth, there'll be an additional $400 million invested in this neighborhood. We are here today to talk about the next commercial office building, but before we do that, I thought maybe a little, couple minutes of context might be helpful. So, this, let's see. This shows you where the Builders District is, south of Cummings, north of 480, from 17th to 14th. This boundary may help a little bit more. And this is a master plan. It's important to note, this is a master plan that's been crafted and created in, in collaboration with the city and several others. The area outlined in red is the Builders District. Over a little bit of time here, we're hopeful that a property owners association and district matters can be, be handled by one group. It'll require merging an existing property owners association into this, and that existing association includes the New Street Multifamily Project, the Cambria Hotel, and the original Keywit University Project. Our group, Nodle Companies, is, will be involved in the development north of P3 and P4. Other developments, again, this is a master plan, so other things that are shown there are ideas. So far, there's a group that at least thinks they make sense, and we'll see what the marketplace says as we go along. To give you a little more context, this gives you an idea of the scale. Here's an artist's rendering, again, of scale. So this is pretty significant, and I think most of you know, with the exception of some of the property at the southern end of this district, most everything now is open land. There've been a lot of negotiations and, and land transactions completed privately and some by the city, but now Creighton University will have the ground that they want to have to use for their future growth. West of 17th Street will work between 17th and 15th now, and others will work on projects to the south. An integral component in all this is place making, and so the intention is to develop an urban park, not to compete with the Riverfront Park, but a real, true urban park. So there are some precedent images here, and this park is for the neighborhood, and it's for folks that live close by, want to walk their dog, want to go have something to drink while their dog is running around a dog park. We happen to be within the, uh, distance required for an entertainment zone. I don't know that we'll go there, but that is a possibility in the future. The park will be constructed with a lot of building materials, and it's intended to be sustainable. It's intended to be easy. It's intended to be free, much like Zone 6 at Exarban Village is. This gives you an idea of some of the components that are planned for the park. The northern portion of the park, right along Cummings, will be temporary, kind of a placeholder for future development, and the southern portion of the park will be permanent. And that southern portion of- And that southern portion, but the current Wareham Building, which has been owned and occupied by Creighton for a long time, and then adjacent to that is an open lot. So, this will kind of tie into all of that. The things that are planned for this park are dog parks, sports courts, a bar, restaurant operation with the liquor license, a movie screen that you can walk in or bike in. The city required a bike path come through this area, so the bike path will go right through the park, and you'll be able to sit and watch a movie. Or, in the temporary portion of the park, with a, a little good fortune here along the way, that'll be a temporary drive-in theater. So, it'll be fun. This is Sixteenth to Seventeenth, south of Cummings. So, the project on the agenda today is a new office building at fifteen-oh-one Mike Fahey. It's about a fifty-seven, fifty-eight million dollar investment. It is planned to be a building constructed mostly of mass timber and just a little bit of steel. We're not going to use mass timber in areas of the building where someone will come along with sheet rock and cover it up. We'd rather have that mass timber in the portions of the building that people will see, either as occupants of the building or passersby. We're really excited about it. This is the, the site for the building, and it's land that is currently owned by our entity adjacent to the alleyway, owned by the city. Just a few images of the building. Hopefully, some of you have seen some of these. Building's very efficient. It's got a hundred-and-seventeen thousand square feet in round numbers of leasable space on four floors. There'll be a second public space on the south side of the building that will be made available to the community, a little less programmed, but albeit just as important as the urban park, and we're finding that pocket parks are, are really, really widely popular and used all over the city.
Jay, the leasable space is all commercial?
It's all commercial space in this building. Other phases of the development will be for lease residential, which could have a workforce component in it, and then there'll be new construction condominiums, and then the Wareham Building will be renovated, and we haven't decided yet whether that'll be for ownership or for lease. So, we're ready to start. We've been at this for quite a while now, and upon your approval and sending this to the council, we'll keep going. Our plans are to be in the ground yet this year, and I don't see any reason why we won't do that. So, I'm, thank you for the, your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Don?
Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Mr. Noddle did a great job of giving you the highlights of the project and description of the project, so I will be fairly brief. I won't bother with the vicinity map. I'll maybe put back up one of the nicer, nicer perspectives of the proposed building. This is new construction, mixed-use development, mix of office and commercial retail space, about eighty-five thousand square feet roughly of office space, ten thousand square feet of street-level food and beverage retail, and about fourteen thousand of additional other retail. Project will retain about two-hundred jobs and create approximately two-hundred-and-thirty new jobs. There's substantial public improvements involved with the project. We're looking at about one-point-four, one-point-four-five million in landscaping, street improvements, and right-of-way utility work. Total project cost or investment in this part of north downtown is approximately fifty-six point eight million dollars. The TIF support requested is five million, six-hundred-eighty-three thousand, six-hundred dollars. This is in an area that's been designated an extremely blighted area, so we're looking at a twenty-year TIF term. It is in the street car influence area, so a portion of the TIF revenue generated will be going towards street car. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else needs, any proponents like to speak? If not, any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the, the public hearing. City?
Yeah, I'll just touch a little bit on the, the agenda item fifteen, which is the plating and the rezoning portion. You know, I don't need to get many of the details, but it includes alley vacation with the plat. There's some streetscaping comments, trail comment as well. There's one item, the, before the plat proceeds to the City Council, the final plat documentation will need to include the ownership signature block for the City of Omaha. That being said, staff recommends, well, I, sorry, before I get that, we have two cases, so I don't know if there's any questions, but we would take separate votes. There's slightly different boundaries on number eight and fifteen, so, so for number, agenda item number eight, staff recommends approval.
Any further discussion or a motion? Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six zero.
For agenda item fifteen, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DS to CBD, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions in the report, approval of the final plat subject to those conditions, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to City Council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the rezoning from DS to CBD, approval of the preliminary plat subject to meeting the five conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to affording the City Council.
Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six zero.
Okay, let's go to number nine. This one is also a mixed one. There's, there's three cases that we'll hear together, number nine, number seventeen, and number twenty-three. First for number nine, case three, C3-22-198. The applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the Forty-eighth and Dodge TIF redevelopment project plan, location southwest of Forty-eighth and Dodge Street. Number seventeen, case number C10-9-15, C10-22-212, C12-22-213. Did I get that right? Yeah. And, uh, the applicant's Forty-six, Forty-seven LLC. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Briggs Place Replat Nine, a major, or excuse me, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R7 and GC to TOD Two MX, along with repeal of the ACI area of Civic Importance Overlay District from a portion of the property, and a repeal of the PK Parking Overlay District from a portion of the property. Location is southwest of Forty-eighth and Dodge Street. And then number twenty-three is C11-22-219, applicant's H&amp;S Partnership LLC. The request is approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location also, again, is at southeast of Forty-eighth and Dodge Streets. Let me, we hear from the applicant on, on all three of them.
Hello, Brian Ackert, one-one-nine South Forty-Ninth Avenue. Yeah, we do have quite a few items here to discuss as far as redeveloping kind of a tired area of Dodge Street here. So, as this fires up, I've got a survey of the current property. On the north side here is Dodge Street, on the south side is Douglas, and then Forty-eighth Street is running north-south over on this side. Currently, there's some single-family residential kind of on the south end of the block. There's currently an alleyway that runs right through the middle of it, partially, so there is an alleyway on part of it, part of it's also backyard, so we're looking at vacating that. And then on the kind of north half of the block that faces Dodge Street, there are some commercial buildings and old service station, but then to the, to the keen observer too, there is also a really nice streamlined modern building in the Pittman Veterinary Hospital. We are looking at integrating that into the entire development as well, kind of as it has a front door of the, of the project. So, going through these as well, this just shows a little bit more from a replat standpoint, what we're looking to do. So, previously, there were quite a few different properties on that. We'd be redeveloping or replating it into one, vacating the alleyway that runs right down the middle of it, as well as dedicating some land back to Dodge Street and back to Forty-eighth Street to accommodate some proper sidewalk widths, as well as some different streetscapes along Dodge Street and Forty-eighth to accommodate some on-street parking. A quick site plan here, kind of showing how this building sits on-site as well. It's located here, so there is quite a bit of grade change that runs across the site this direction. We are integrating covered parking, conditioned parking stalls kind of into the hillside with mainly multifamily situated kind of throughout. So, it is podium construction with garages and then residential up above. That Pittman Building is located right here. Again, that's kind of the front door into the entire development where all the different leasing agents are, as well as some different work-from-home spaces and those kind of things. Along Dodge Street as well, we have a lot of our amenities from a residential standpoint, so there's fitness center, club room, theater rooms, those kind of things that really kind of help activate Dodge Street from an activity standpoint. And then on the Douglas Street side, we have a little bit more landscaping, some different park benches that are integrated into here and make it a little bit more of a neighborhood feel on that side. And so, I'm also here with quite a few others from the project development team. I can answer any architectural-related questions, but we also have civil as well as legal here as well, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other proponents? Don?
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Again, kind of hit the highlights. I think you got yourselves fairly well-oriented on the location of the site. Long Dodge, just west of Saddle Creek, a block or so. All the buildings on the thirteen sites, thirteen parcels that have been assembled for this project, they'll all be demolished, including with the exception of the Pittman Building, which, as the applicant mentioned, will be the front door of the project, which is a building that's a local landmark. The construction is for a new five-story apartment building. It'll have about three-hundred-twenty-nine one- and two-bedroom apartment units. I'm told approximately two-hundred-and-twenty parking spaces inside the building with another, let me put up some more renderings, another eleven surface stalls on the site, and about twenty-seven in the public right-of-way. The project is providing about eight-hundred-fourteen thousand dollars in public improvements, so there's a substantial amount of public improvements going on with this project. Total project investment in the neighborhood is eighty-two-point-three million dollars. The applicants are requesting ten million, seven-hundred-fifty thousand dollars in TIF support. This project is in the street car influence area, so it will be contributing a portion of its TIF revenues to the street car system. Project also complies with our TOD project requirements, so we have increased density, which we want for infill along our orbit system, meets all the required criteria of our TIF program, is an appropriate land use for the area, and complies with the goals of the city's master plan. And with that, one more picture, maybe. Let's be looking at the site, looking towards the southwest. With that, staff asks for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak? If not, any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We hear from City Eric.
Yeah, so I guess I'll touch briefly on the, the plating and the PUR portion. I won't go into much. The plat is pretty straightforward. There was a previous east-west alley vacation that would be recorded concurrently with this final plat. There is at least one lot that has a PK, which is a Parking Overlay District designation for it, and that will be repealed. It's kind of an older zoning tool that isn't utilized much, but with the new redevelopment, it's not necessary, as well as repealing the ACI as it is redundant with many of the requirements of the TOD zoning. Specifically for the PUR, there's a few items that I just wanted to point out. There's some modifications being incorporated with the projects. We'll have to coordinate on some of the balconies, make sure some of those are recessed and the right amount projected. Impervious coverage, slight increase of that, as well as two-access drives to the south to the different garage levels as there is grade change. So, there'll be a few modifications to the PUR plan before proceeding to City Council, but outside of that, we think it's a, a great project along a main corridor and utilization of the orbit line, and we think that could be a great project for the area. So, there are three different recommendations that we'll take separately, so specifically for number nine, staff recommends approval.
Any further discussion with the board? If not, let's have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six zero.
For agenda item seventeen, this is the plat in rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R7 and GC to TOD Two MX, approval of the repeal of the ACI overlay district, approval of the repeal of the PK overlay district, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to those conditions, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from R7 and GC to TOD Two MX, approval of the repeal of the ACI overlay district, approval of the repeal of the PK Parking Overlay District, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following five conditions, approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to affording the request to City Council for final action.
Debbie, please record the vote.
Page?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six zero.
For agenda item twenty-three, staff recommends approval of the PUR, subject to submittal of acceptable final plans prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district subject to submittal of an acceptable final plans prior to affording the request onto City Council.
Debbie, please record the vote.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six zero.
Okay, now we'll go to number ten, which we'll also hear with number twenty-two. Number ten, KC3-22-200, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the Exarban Keys Apartments TIF redevelopment project plan, location is southeast of Seventieth and Haskell Street. And number twenty-two, KC10-22-206, C11-22-220, applicant CK Acquisition Company LLC. Request is rezoning from CC to R7 with the approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. The location is southeast of Seventieth and Haskell Streets. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Randy Kuschak with Lampre Neerson, one-four-seven ten West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, also joined by Ryan Spellman with J Development and Eric Westman with Alley Pointer Maketto. I represent Lampre Neerson and the civil engineering on the project. This project is a mix of plating, which was heard on consent, a admin plat that is going currently with a right-of-way dedication, and then today, we've got our And then today, we've got our PUR and rezoning, as well as some TIF requests as well. This project represents the area of a site that's currently under development by others. The existing Hotel and Convention Center that had been there for several, for many years, has been demoed, and this site is now clean bare, and we're moving forward with some construction on the east side of the newly constructed Seventieth Street that provides connectivity through the site. So as that project wraps up, multifamily is being proposed here on the north half of this block, which will be the newly-platted MH Landing Replat One. The lot's being split into two lots with the current development happening on the north side. The multifamily that'll happen in this area, we're proposing two hundred and fifty-five multifamily units over top of a parking podium on first level with kind of two levels of grade to take up some grade change in this site. It'll be wrapped by parking on the outside, as well as some on-street parking that'll happen along Seventieth Street and Haskell Street. Along with this project, there'll be some other land to the south that will be platted and left aside. That area would be not part of this project and would be marketed separately by the applicant. Here to answer any questions you have about the product or the project. They answered us.
Thank you.
Great, I do have a question, maybe not for you, but I assume you're the developers as well on this. So just in the proposal, it says that there's going to be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and two mixed-income affordable housing complex units in eleven residential structures. And then you say there's going to be another one-third of the units will be affordable housing.
Sir, I think you have a different project.
Please give your name.
I'm sorry, Ryan Spellman, nine-nine-five-one, Harney Parkway North. And I am here as one of the developers of the project.
I'm sorry, I do.
No problem.
Thank you.
As long as I'm up here, I am available for any questions. So I appreciate the board's consideration, and if any questions come up, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don.
Any other proponents? Don, for the TIF?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. Here to talk about the TIF aspect of the project. We got the vicinity map already there. Maybe put up a site plan. For now. Yeah, this is a new parcel that's platted out of the former Ramada Inn Cocoa Keys project site near Seventy-second and Grover. The overall parcel that you saw on the other map is about eight acres. It'll be further subdivided, and the TIF project itself will be constructed on the north half, the north, about three point nine-nine acres of the lot. The project will be new construction, four and five stories, a, an apartment building complex with about two hundred fifty-five market rate apartment units. Again, this project has significant public improvements involved with its development. Improvements to Haskell Street and South Seventieth Street. We're looking at about three hundred seventy thousand dollars in public improvements. Project includes a hundred sixty parking stalls inside the building, a hundred thirty-five stalls on the site in surface parking. The developer is Sixty-nine Fifty-two North App LLC, and that's managed by Ryan Spellman and Jim Royer. This total investment in the city in this project is sixty-two million dollars approximately. The request, the TIF request that had been approved by the TIF committee is for up to six million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars in TIF support. Give you one more image. Have some loft units, otherwise it's mostly four stories. The project meets the required criteria of our city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. It complies with the goals of the city's master plan. It looks to be a good project, and we ask for your approval.
Thanks, Don. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. You know, we've flown new aerial photography earlier in the spring, and that's supposed to be made available here in the coming weeks. So this would be a good site that would, you know, show what's really truly out there as we look at the aerials with, you know, the former convention center and hotel. And it's changed quite a bit if you've driven by this area. You know, also, as we go through this agenda, there's a lot of big projects. And I just wanted to point out that we nearly have fourteen hundred multifamily units on today's agenda for approval. So I think it's amazing, some of the things that Omaha is doing. That's not counting single-family or the office commercial. That's just strictly multifamily units. So I just wanted to point that out as we have some of these big projects in here that we're discussing. So specifically for this case, I just want to mention a couple of items on the PUR. We'll have to work with the applicant on final coordination of final plans, a few adjustments, so that we can pick up a little more landscaping in certain areas or provide a sidewalk. So there's a little bit of shifting, but, you know, that won't have any drastic impact, and I think the applicant is agreeable to that. So unless there's any specific questions on the items that we discussed in the pre-meeting, I would probably just go to the recommendations. So specifically, make sure I got the right numbers here. For Agenda Item number ten, staff recommends approval.
Do you have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Okay, number twenty-two.
For Agenda Item Twenty-two. So this includes the rezoning as well as the PUR. Staff, is my right page? Yes. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from CC to R7 and approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submittal of final PUR plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the rezoning from CC to R7 and approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding the request on to City Council.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, Agenda Item number eleven. KC three dash twenty-two dash two zero one. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the Kennedy Square East TIF redevelopment project plan. Location southwest of Thirty-fifth and Bristol Streets. Now we hear from the city, Don. Yes. Let the record show that Sidney has recruited herself from the chambers.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning, back again. This project, Kennedy Square East Tax Increment Financing Project, is located southwest of Thirty-fifth and Bristol Streets. It's in North Omaha, just west of the North Freeway. The project is comprised of six lots, encompasses about six acres. It's been occupied by the Spencer Homes Public Housing Complex. These structures will be demolished and the site redeveloped as part of the city's Choice Neighborhood Initiative, CNI Initiative, which includes, excuse me, funding from HUD. The project is, it involves a number of buildings, a fairly large and aggressive project, ambitious project, I should say. The project is new construction. There'll be eleven residential structures and one mixed-use structure, so a total of twelve buildings. This shows the mixed-use building at the west end of the site. There's a hundred and two units total, residential units in the development. Fifty-one of them will be in this mixed-use building. There'll also be a community room and about one thousand seven hundred, seven hundred square feet of commercial space in the mixed-use building. This shows the balance of the site, the mixed-use building there, the rest of the eleven residential structures that vary from large, single-family homes, like seven-bedroom, single-family homes, a couple of them, to stacked duplexes and some row home units. That'll be the other fifty-one units out of the, out of the hundred, hundred and two. The project developer is Brinshaw Development LLC, managed by Todd Lieberman. I would note that the hundred and two units, about a third of them will be affordable housing units for income-qualified households. About a third of them are replacement units for people that have been displaced by, by some of the demolition that is going on in North Omaha. And one-third will be market rates. So it's a mixed-income project. Total project investment, another picture. Total project investment in North Omaha is about thirty-eight point seven million dollars. The applicants are requesting one million, nine hundred sixty thousand dollars in TIF support. This is in an area that's been designated by the city as an extremely blighted area. So the TIF term for this project will be a twenty-year TIF. This project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. Will bring some new life, I think, to this portion of North Omaha, and it complies with the goals of our city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Brian Hanson, eighteen twenty-three, Harney Street, Omaha, six-eight-one-oh-two. Here on behalf of the Omaha Housing Authority, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is the one that I had the question on, on the affordable housing. So it's a great project, don't get me wrong, it's a great project, but can you give us an idea of what you consider to be, and I know that you're getting a lot of tax credits, and I assume so, that's coming into play with this, but what the rents might be on those affordable housing units?
Sure, I can do that. So this project, we call it, it's a third heavily subsidized, which would be the use of project-based vouchers. Project-based vouchers fall under Section Eight of the CFR. And it's, so they're vouchers that, you know, in typical situations, those vouchers are used by tenants and they can go find a landlord. With project-based vouchers, the voucher's tied to the landlord, so tied to the development. So one-third of the units are vouchers where the resident will pay no more than thirty percent of their income towards rent. That, those are what we call the Spencer replacement units. And so those are targeted not only for folks who might want to return from Spencer when they were relocated, when we demolished the, well, actually, we started demolition this week, as we demolished those units, but it's also available to people who income-qualify. The other third will be straight low-income housing tax credit units. Those units have a little bit higher rents. I believe that the, I'm blanking on what our current rental standard is, but I believe that, you know, it's affordable to generally, if you're making eighty percent of the area median income. And I'm sorry, I don't remember what the area median income is this year. So, and then one-third are market rate. Now, those market rate units, a lot of times, also are, they're available to tenants who have a regular Section Eight voucher. So in a lot of cases, we see that more of the development is actually targeted towards affordable families than even the two-thirds.
Okay.
It's a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you. Any other opponents, or, excuse me, proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, I don't need to discuss much on this site. We've had the plat and the two PURs that were on the agenda last month. Just reiterate, it's a great project, you know, that the city is a partner with all of our partners, OHA and Brinshaw Development, and just, it's, you know, if you haven't gone by this area or near the Highlander, it's just, it's just fabulous. So it's really been transformative in this next phase. We'll continue to do that. So we're definitely happy to recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Franklin? Oh, sorry.
She's out.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove five-zero.
Okay. Let the record show that Sidney has returned to the chambers. We'll take case, or, excuse me, item number twelve. C ten dash twenty-two dash two oh three. C twelve dash twenty-two dash two oh four. One Professional Square LLC is the applicant. Their request is for the preliminary plat approval of Antler View West, a subdivision outside of city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. The location is southwest of one hundred ninety-second Street and West Maple Road. Could we have a show of hands? We received a number of letters. Could we have a show of hands of anybody that's in opposition that wishes to testify? Okay. I need to let you know that, and I guess the applicant has the option here to give his, his position on this. We are, because of information that we feel is missing from the application, we are most likely going to be laying over. So the final disposition of this will not take place today. So whether you, in respect to his time and your time, whether you want to go through the testimony today or not, I guess it's up to the applicant. So, what's that? And to you as well, yes. So if we want to hear from the applicant, is the applicant here? Okay. Yeah, so any other proponents? Do we want to hear the opponents? I guess, do you have a spokesman? You know, we, with so many people testifying in respect for everybody's interest, if we could have somebody that could speak as a spokesman for the group, we would appreciate that. Please give your name and address.
It's on consent, consent for layover, just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Recommendation for layover.
Yes. So my name's Ben Nelson. My address is three-one-one-two, North One-Ninety-fourth Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska. So I'm four houses to the south of this proposed development. I'm also on the SID board and a licensed professional engineer. So we had a handful of concerns, which I'm sure you guys saw in the multiple emails and letters that were sent to you. I'd say one of the largest one is the creek property that this property will drain into. Our SID recently put nearly six hundred, or up, seven hundred thousand dollars into the fixing of that creek due to erosion caused by water runoff. I see that the Planning Commission is recommending that they take care of the first half-inch of rainwater due to water quality, but there's a lot of other risks with the water runoff going down into that creek, and it really needs to be looked at. Recommend that the Planning Commission make sure that they do that. Also, the traffic study that is still missing, we have some concerns there. The SID puts a lot of money into our roads, maintaining it, nearly a hundred thousand dollars every year. Just making sure that whatever is done with those roads, that minimal use on our, our paid-for roads are used for consideration. And those are the bulk of our concerns. I mean, there's a lot of other things, which you guys will see in the letters if you review those, as well as the emails. So I appreciate your consideration, and make sure you look at all of those before you make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
And I just wanted to add for everybody here, just because it's laid over today doesn't mean that you're not going to have this opportunity when it does get put back on the agenda. So make sure you do, we appreciate you coming down today and respect your time. So I want to make sure you understand the process moving forward. You will have a chance to provide testimony again when this comes back to us. If it's.
Well, so I do want to point out, if you do want to testify, you do have that opportunity today. You know, we're not necessarily trying to discourage that. We know that you came, you spent time off and came down here. So, but yeah, just to touch on the process from here, if it's voted for layover, which I would assume so. It depends if it, if it came back next month, with, which I would be surprised, because new submittal materials have to come in next week. There's a lot that needs to be submitted, so I don't think that would be the case. But if it was on the agenda next month, we would not send a new notification. However, if it was laid over longer than one month, then we would send, we would re-notify to, within property owners within three hundred feet or the Registered Neighborhood Association. So, go ahead, sir.
My name is Jeff Stewart. I'm the SID board chair, and I've served with Ben on that SID board. I just want to, I just want to mention. Oh, three-one-two-nine, North One-Ninety-third Street. I just want to say, say that in talking to our SID board. I just want to say, say that in talking to our SID board lawyer, attorney, he had mentioned that generally it is asked that if you're submitting proposals like this, you actually work with the adjacent neighborhoods. This is a new development. And while I do not normally, and in fact, I'm sitting in awe of some of the new developments that are going on in Omaha, would never stand against development. This will directly connect in with our roads. And really, we've had no conversations. The first notification we received is in the mail from the planning department. I think that's really unfortunate. I don't know how that will get marked, but it would be appreciated, appreciated wherever this gets laid over to, that somebody in our neighborhood is notified of that. And I know you guys have received a lot of emails and a lot of calls from concerned citizens in our neighborhood. Again, I don't necessarily stand against the development, but I do think it would be nice to at least have a chance to talk with the developer before we move forward.
Hey Jeff, in one of the recommendations from the planning department, it says to allow the applicant time to hold a meeting with neighborhood property owners to introduce and discuss elements of the proposal. So that's going to have to be done for you and with you so that you can understand what they're trying to do and you can have some input on that. So that's, that's going to have to happen, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Oh, you bet, you bet.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I am Ronald Dupell, D-U-P-E-L-L, thirty-nine oh two North one ninety-fifth Street, Elkhorn, six eight zero two two. I'm a member of the Board of Homeowners Association in Indian Creek. What little information we received from one of our residents who is within three hundred feet of the proposed development, I have looked at it. And it's, it's not what it represents, it's what it doesn't represent. I live about three hundred, four hundred feet off of Maple. Maple Street has an immense amount of traffic already. There's a lot of speeding that goes on, on Maple Street. There doesn't appear from the picture that we received, there doesn't appear to be any access or exit ramps out of the proposed development off of Maple Street. I didn't look at one hundred ninety-second Street, and I think there's one more exit to that property. And those things are to be crucial to the safety of residents. The amount of traffic on Maple Street, since I moved out there in two thousand sixteen, has increased immensely. I mean, the traffic there is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It rarely, on the weekends, winds down about three or four in the morning. There's a lot of traffic from the firehouse that is up there on two hundred and fourth Street. So we ask in your deliberations, as you review this project in the future, to make sure there are more things pointed towards safety of residents and travelers on Maple Street and the surrounding communities that surround it. And the final thing that I have is, it's going to be a mixed-use development. And we hope that the height of any of the apartment buildings will not exceed the height of, I think there's a fifty-five and older development to the west of this project. And we hope that no apartment buildings will exceed that height as in accordance with, has been approved in the past. So those are the concerns that we have, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other opponents, somebody should speak? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Peterson. I live at thirty-one oh three North one hundred ninety-third Avenue in the SID, right adjacent to the proposed development. And, you know, I moved in in two thousand and sixteen, and it's a very small neighborhood. It's only four streets, really, that run north-south. So the proposed, what I saw in the document would allow traffic from the apartments to come into the, our neighborhood. And we have apartments on the opposite side, and there's an access road up at the top that feeds out and they can flow out of the neighborhood if you look at it, which is fine. And I think it would be okay if that same thing occurred on the other side at the very top of our neighborhood. But allowing the apartment traffic to come through the neighborhood of four streets would really just turn it into a, you know, a big traffic cloak. There's a ton of kids, I do not have small children, but there, I know Ben has small children, Ben Nelson and a lot of other people do. And I know that it would be, and pets and a lot of, you know, it's really a family neighborhood. And it would completely change the complexion and flavor of that neighborhood. And they're very nice, you know, homes, and I, you know, have a concern about, about that. So I just wanted to get it down on record, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, any other opponents?
My name's Mike Reedmiller. I'm at thirty-two oh nine North one ninety-fourth Street. Can I have the screen on? Okay, yeah. So anyway, another thing, and very, I agree with everything that was said. From everybody that I've spoken to in our neighborhood, nobody that I've talked, that I've spoken to is in favor of this in its present form. Nobody at all, for various reasons, a lot of them stated in the letters. The thing that I want to point out, yeah, the through street that the gentleman just mentioned right here, which I totally agree with, this should not go through. Right now, where we see, that dead ends. And if that is opened up, we're going to have twenty-four, seven a day traffic going through, which is, would not be conducive to that neighborhood. Like he said, there's only four streets right now, it's pretty small neighborhood. Or right here could be where the traffic could flow into from one ninety-second. That's kind of the standard that's been set on the other side of the neighborhood, the south side. But the reason I want to talk today real quick is, right here, there really should be a buffer zone. They've got this development bumping up right to our neighborhood. So in addition to the street not going through right here, there really should be a buffer zone, and I think a natural buffer zone of trees. Because off of one ninety-second, right here, so if you, Elkhorn View Estates along here, there's a number of pine trees that are very visually appealing, obviously environmentally friendly. So that would be nice if we had a buffer zone, so if this development did not bump right up against it as we see there. But more was not as far south. So maybe a buffer zone of two to three levels of pine trees, similar to what we've already seen on one ninety-second.
Okay.
So, anyway, and I did submit a letter with other points, but that's the main thing. The other thing too, like Ben had mentioned, there are significant water runoff issues because I know a lot of neighbors have had issues with that, a lot of money spent. And there's ongoing environmental concerns with that, with the water runoff. So you have a big development like this with apartments and commercial running to this river or stream either. Again, a lot of different impact, not only now, but many years and even decades into the future. So something that really needs to be looked at closely. And I'd be interested to see what the developer has done to study that. Because that could, again, huge impact environmentally, possibly even legally in the future. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other opponents wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, do you want to address those elements?
Yeah, I, I can address most of those comments, I think. So I guess just taking a big look at the site and master plan compliance. Each major intersection kind of in this western portion of our city is designated for a certain amount of office and commercial acres. They're called mixed-use nodes or mixed-use intersections. This intersection is a sixty-acre center. And obviously, the southeast corner has some office and commercial that's already programmed and, you know, has that zoning in place and taken up some of those acres. But there are still remaining acres of office-commercial. So the proposed office-commercial, the amount of office-commercial that is being proposed is compliant with the master plan. Another component related to those mixed-use intersections, but also specifically along the state highways of West Maple, West Dodge, West Center and two hundred and fourth Street. The master plan does allow unlimited amount of apartments within a quarter mile from that state highway. So proposed multifamily is also master plan compliant. Now, the submittal was, was rather lacking in some of the details and, and information that we like to see. And so there's multiple reasons of why staff is recommending layover. But I do just want to point out that, that master plan-wise, office and commercial and multifamily can be supported in some configuration. Now, whether that changes the layout, I just want to put that out there. You know, obviously, you know, the neighbor, or the applicant not having a neighborhood meeting is concerning. There's no specific city requirement, but obviously, the planning board holds that to a high standard and really requires that of, of development such as this. So every time when, when developers or applicants come in to meet with city staff, we always highly recommend encourage for them to engage with the neighborhood above and beyond what our notification requirements are. But, you know, really to, to engage with the neighborhood, you know, early on and get them involved. So that's discouraging to hear that that hasn't happened yet. As far as the, the off-ramps from the arterial streets, there are requirements for turn lanes that, that would likely be put in. I'm not going to speak for Public Works, but typically, we see right turn lanes off of the, you know, for a distance, usually it's like three hundred feet back from those intersections. So, you know, as you come on one hundred ninety-second from, from the north, there's typically a right turn lane. That would be a requirement also on West Maple at about one hundred ninety-fifth Street there as you were heading from west to east. And we do have Public Works here that can touch on specifics as well. Buffer yard on the south, there is a buffer yard requirement when we have mixed-use zoning to single-family residential. It sometimes looks at the height of the building, so we'll have to, to look at those specifics. There are required tree plantings that are required within that buffer zone. Now, that might not be the amount of trees that you're looking for, because it's not usually a continuous row of evergreens or anything like that. But that could be something that you approach the applicant, you know, as a suggestion or something you would like to see if and when you have that neighborhood meeting, hopefully. But there is, there is code-required buffer yards that has to be landscaping, that you can't have buildings or parking lots within. There were some comments about erosion. There are stormwater requirements that the Public Works Department reviews and requires for developments. So that is part of our review. You have to retain and treat certain amount of rainfall before it can empty into the, you know, the sewer system or the, you know, or drainage ways or wherever that may be going. So that is looked part of our environmental division, so they are part of the review process. I can, you know, guarantee that, that that is looked at. Traffic and connectivity. So, you know, the Elkhorn View Estates neighborhood, it was set up with two street stubs going to the north. So at the location of one hundred ninety-fourth Street and then one hundred ninety-second Avenue. Those were intended to continue through to the, to this site, you know, the subject site. Elkhorn View Estates was platted under the city of Elkhorn as well as was the apartments further to the south. So, you know, there were some different criteria in place. You know, typically, the city of Omaha would have required a connection from the apartments to the south to the single-family neighborhood. That wasn't done. But those street stubs were set up on the north. And, you know, we believe that those need to continue through. I do have Ryan Haas. I don't know if you'd like to come up and just touch on connectivity a little bit that we've discussed in the pre-meeting or with similar sites.
Yeah, Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. Just to expand on that a little bit, Eric, that's, that's a standard requirement city-wide is to provide a well-connected network of local internal streets. And so this is how the city of Omaha sets up subdivisions as well, just the way, same way that the city of Elkhorn did when, when the original subdivision to the south was approved, to provide street stubs with public street rights of way, but extending to the boundary of the subdivision. And then when the next subdivision comes in to tie in with, with those streets, with the new public streets. So that's a standard requirement. There's a lot of benefits to doing that, both to the, to the residents and people visiting the businesses, as well as the people that happen to be driving by on West Maple Road, one hundred ninety-second, for example. So the, just to maybe expand on a couple of your points from the public works side of things. Concerns with stormwater, we, we share the same concerns. It is a requirement of the city of Omaha that the applicant provide for no net increase in stormwater runoff. That is an engineered solution where they analyze the way stormwater currently runs off the site and how, after all of the improvements are constructed, how stormwater would run off the site without, absent any treatment measures. And then they have to put in typically like a stormwater basin. And that slows the stormwater to match the current stormwater runoff rate. So certainly, that's a concern the city shares, and it's a requirement of the plating process. We don't take it on faith. It's an engineered plan that we review and approve. So that will be certainly something the neighbors should be aware that the city will make sure happens as part of this process. And then just to expand again on the traffic issue, we also share the concerns about increased traffic. A new development that complies with the city's master plan is going to generate more traffic than, than is currently there. So the condition of plat approval will be a traffic study to meet city criteria that we have spelled out, standard criteria that we will review and approve before the final plat goes to city council. The applicant will have to provide for all improvements identified in the traffic study. And just so the neighbors are aware, the, the current proposed plat is split into two phases. And we will analyze the phase one condition where the, the only arterial connection will occur at Bedford. And the applicant will have to provide improvements generated by those phase one trips. And then we will also have the traffic study analyze phase one plus phase two, which will then add the contemplated connection at West Maple. And they would, at the time of the future final plat phase, have to provide additional public improvements for the phase one plus phase two.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, so I don't have much more. But basically, there are several items that staff needs to be addressed before coming back on, before a planning board agenda. So unless there are any other questions, staff recommends layover.
Yeah, I just want to comment also that I think a lot of the things, as, as you see that, that you've addressed are already on our, on our agenda to resolve so that, so that this meets with the criteria that we would normally like to see. And that's why it was, our recommendation would be for layover, so that you have time to meet with them, that they have time to do the things that we wish them to do. So, do we have a motion?
Thank you. Debbie, please record the vote.
Paige?
Yes.
Sodalongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro six zero.
And thank you all for coming. I appreciate your input. Okay. Now we will go to number, what is it? Twenty-five? Twenty-five? Okay. Now we're to item number twenty-five. All right. This is case C-eight twenty-two, twenty-two, dash two twenty-one, applicant Tim Hughes, Second Mile Inc. It's, it's on, well, hold on, my phone's ringing. Of all the people, I didn't shut mine off, I thought I did. The request is for approval of special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled, in the R-Four district. The location is fifty-six oh eight Blondo Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, my name's Ralph Lassiter. Office is located at Mount Mariah Baptist Church where I serve as the pastor emeritus, twenty-six oh two North twenty-fourth Street. Our residence is twenty-four oh nine North one hundred sixty-first Street. I am the current board chair, or board president for the Second Mile organization. And I appreciate the opportunity to provide additional information in support of our application for a special use permit. First of all, let me just provide a little bit of information about the program itself. Second Mile is located on the northeast corner of fifty-six and Blondo, fifty-six oh eight Blondo Street. It is a residence that was purchased by a member of my church, Tim Hughes, when he learned of the program. We were seeking properties appropriate for the program throughout primarily North Omaha and Central Omaha. And Mr. Hughes learned of the program and purchased his property, leased it to us with the intent. to us, uh, with the intent of our being able to purchase the property at some future time. The program was founded in September of 2020. Uh, it is a faith-based residential program, uh, that uses secular programming along with biblical principles. Our objective is to, uh, serve those individuals who have completed an initial treatment program. Uh, we are not a treatment program. We are a residential program. As a matter of fact, individuals who may have had, uh, alcohol or drug addiction issues, uh, it is required that they have already completed such a program, uh, prior to entering Second Mile, hence the name of the program, Second Mile. Okay? Uh, as a matter of fact, we also do regular, uh, drug and alcohol treatment. And if individuals, uh, fail those tasks, uh, they could be subject to termination, uh, from the program. We've been operating, uh, since mid-2021, uh, based on, uh, the allowance for R four, which allows, uh, group living, non-disabled for up to four individuals. As a matter of fact, we've had some, some of our resident, some of our, of our neighbors to say, Jake, didn't know that you guys were in operation. That's our intent, uh, to essentially be good neighbors. Give you just a quick overview of the components or core elements of the program. Uh, first of all, it's our objective to equip individuals to be good citizens. A part of that approach is to help them to develop a relationship with the church. Uh, we don't demand or require particular membership, but we do, uh, ask that all residents have a relationship with some faith-based, uh, organization. They receive structured housing and, uh, residence is operated in such a manner that individuals actually learn how, uh, to live and maintain a residence. Uh, and essentially that means that they're, they're gaining a number of life skills, uh, how to do laundry, how to cook. As a matter of fact, uh, we've had, uh, individuals from other programs to tour the facility and they often will ask the question, are you sure men live here? Uh, and that's just based on how clean and orderly, uh, uh, the home is. Uh, we're a firm believer in community engagement. Uh, that is a core element of the program. Uh, and in just a moment, I'll share with you some of the activities, uh, that have already occurred. Yes.
Is it just a men's facility?
It is just a men's facility.
And, and how long typically will, um, a resident stay with you?
We anticipate a minimum residence of six months, could be up to nine to 12 months, okay, depending upon their overall program plan. Okay? In terms of leadership, uh, governance is provided by a board comprised of pastors and individuals and all members who are not pastors or individuals who are currently, uh, serving, uh, in similar programs or have completed life change that we expect of our residents. Okay? Uh, you can see our primary church supporters, uh, Antioch Baptist Church, Mount Mariah, Renewed Hope and West Side Church. So those are our primary, uh, supporters in the community. Uh, as I mentioned before, community service is really critical, uh, because we believe that individuals should give back. And so stewardship is pretty critical to us. Uh, in June of this year, uh, we conducted, uh, an outreach at Metcalf Park, uh, where we actually, in partnership with, uh, City Parks, we actually cleaned up the park and also served hot dogs and, and other refreshments to the neighbors. Again, it's our desire to be, uh, good neighbors. Uh, each month, residents and the leadership of the program, uh, serve at, uh, Friendship Pantry in Council Bluffs. Uh, and that's a, a once a month activity where we actually, uh, will capture donations and provide those to the homeless and other individuals in the comp, in the Council Bluffs area. Uh, you'll see that we are in the development of a food bank located, uh, at Mount Mariah, where we will provide similar services, uh, to the residents and the individuals who live in north Omaha. So, uh, in, and this will predate some of you on the board. In nineteen, from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen, uh, early nineteen eighty-one, I served, uh, as one of the program directors, uh, for Boy's Town's, uh, Community Development Program, uh, where the objective was to develop residential programs for teenagers around the country. And it was not unusual for, uh, neighbors to be concerned about such programs, uh, being located. And so, uh, I learned what was necessary in order for programs of this nature to be good neighbors, to actually be an asset to the community as opposed to a deficit. And so I, I just want to answer a few questions that, that I believe that some of the neighbors may have, you may have, uh, and will then respond to any additional questions or concerns that our opponents might have. Uh, first of all, I've already mentioned that this is not a drug or an alcohol, uh, treatment program. As a matter of fact, individuals who have issues, uh, are not admitted into the program. Uh, will there be excessive street parking and traffic? Uh, as a matter of fact, we anticipate there being, uh, very little change. As I mentioned earlier, most individuals who live in the area don't know that the program exists. Once a month, the board conducts a board meeting at the residence and at that time, uh, seven to eight cars may be located, although we do have, uh, now onsite parking at the request, uh, of, uh, city planning, uh, for at least eight cars, and that's not counting, uh, our garage capacity. Will there be an increase in crime? We think there'll actually be a decrease, uh, because there will be more eyes in, in terms of our residents on, uh, the property. Plus you have individuals who probably, uh, have a pretty good understanding of why crime occurs and how to prevent it. Lastly, will property values decline? We don't think so. As a matter of fact, it's our desire that, uh, the property values will increase. We maintain our property, uh, at, at the highest level, level that's at least at the same level of our residents, or should I say of our neighbors, if, if not better. We conducted an open house in the spring of this year, uh, where we invited, uh, all of the surrounding neighbors to come and tour the program, uh, to interact with the board members. Uh, we had, uh, three neighbors to actually come by, uh, and they ate with us, asked questions. Uh, we've also distributed information about the program, uh, to all of the neighbors. Uh, our desire is to be good neighbors and, uh, in order to meet the needs of those who are ready for a second mile, not a first level program. It's our desire to be able to increase our capacity from four, uh, to eight individuals. Uh, Ms. Franklin asked whether this is a program for men only. Uh, we are considering the development of a program for women, uh, as well. That's not before you today. It may be, hopefully will be at some point in the future. Uh, there were a couple of concerns expressed, uh, from the planning board, from the planning department. Uh, one was in relation to, a relationship to a landscape plan. Uh, I don't, even though my brother's an architect, I'm not, uh, uh, so forgive the lack of architectural elements. Uh, but I did just want to indicate, uh, that, uh, I can provide a more formal, uh, landscape plan if necessary. Uh, but you could see that, uh, this is the residence here. Uh, we have a full, uh, flower bed in the rear. Uh, there are flower beds on the east and the south corner. Uh, there is a large elm tree here and there are also three very mature, uh, pine trees here. All of the other area is green space. Uh, we don't anticipate, uh, changing any of that. Uh, I'm going to ask if, uh, Larry Nicholson, our executive director, uh, would just come and answer any questions that you might have about programming.
I'm Larry Nicholson, Jr., uh, executive director and co-founder of Second Mile. I live at ninety nineteen Monroe Road, Plattsmith, Nebraska, and would be glad to ask any questions that you, uh, may have.
I do have a quick one. A quick one. Your typical resident, um, will they have another residence while they're in the program? Are they typically in your program because they, or partially because they are without another residence?
Yes, uh, most of the individuals that come to our program are seeking to build more life skill plans. I'm, uh, writing a book right now and it's called Living in the Gap. When people come out of entry level program and the numbers are eighty-six point five percent were relapsed in the first year, um, we are trying to provide life skill programming and what it takes to get from coming out of your entry level treatment to have independent and successful living. And I'm, um, aftercare, um, case manager with Open Door Mission and I also lead their street ministry program. So I'm constantly in contact with those in need and we are developing a program just like this kind of at the Open Door Mission too. And they send their individuals to our program.
So in, in answering your question, individuals do not have a resident, residence when they come to our program. One of their goals is to acquire appropriate housing.
Yeah, that's kind of, that was kind of where I was leading to. I assume most of these are homeless individuals or, or probably individuals that don't have families at least, correct? If they do, do they have a family home that they can go to?
Generally, we're talking about individuals who have experienced a considerable amount of brokenness in family relationships. And that led to their being in a first level program. So many of them do have, uh, families. Part of our goal is to reunite them with the, with those families. If those families have a resident, make sure that they're able to return and, and be a part of that.
That's great.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great mission and I applaud you for what you're trying to do. Obviously, it's, it's great help. And I assume then that these people that come to you are referred to you through the church affiliations that you have or through, how, how are they referred into the program?
Open Door Mission, Freeway Ministries, Santa Francis, Stevens Center. We have a very, um, rigorous, uh, application to get in. We just don't take anybody. Uh, it's like a fourteen-page application. So they are referred to, they ask if we have an open bed and we would really like to see this person enter your program and they have to want it as well. So we get referrals from other organizations.
So you, you've been in, in existence roughly with this Second Mile program for two years?
Yeah.
Roughly, right?
Organizationally for two years.
So can you measure your success rate on, with the individuals? Do you know how effective you've been?
With the four people living in our houses, we've had, uh, two people asked to leave, um, because they weren't following the rules and everything, but we've had, uh, three people graduate. Uh, one guy's reunited with his family. Uh, he came to our house because he was struggling with his wife. They were thinking about getting divorced. He came and stayed four months with us. His kids took, uh, son took his first steps in our house and he's reunited with his wife again and, and back into a church environment and, and doing very well. Had another individual come that, uh, didn't believe in God and, and wanted to learn about Jesus. He got saved. Uh, we led him to Christ in the house and now he's working in the same type of field that I am and he's a success. So we do have, we're boosting those numbers and that's why, um, it is so vital, uh, for this program that we're doing.
Uh, I didn't mention it, but all residents are required to be fully employed and they also contribute, uh, to the cost of the program. They do pay a portion of their income as rent.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I assume there's no other proponents, any opponents want to speak?
Thank you. My name's Graham Jura, J U R A. Uh, I live at two zero two three North Fifty-Sixth Street, uh, one block north of this proposed permit here. Prior to beginning here, I'd just like to submit that I did submit a petition to Mr. LaRocco that contains nineteen signatures that are also in opposition of this. He assured that that would be a part of your packet as well. But before I begin, thank you for your time and your consideration. Section fifty-five dash eight-eight-four of the Omaha Municipal Code is what governs special uses. And what it requires is that it gives an extensive public review process so that, uh, projects can be reviewed for site development, operating characteristics, and most importantly, potential negative effects that are on surrounding neighborhoods. Now again, as I said, I live in twenty twenty-three North Fifty-Sixth. I live a block north of this house, of this establishment. I bought my house in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, I live, I was in love with the neighborhood and the established historical neighborhood that it's a part of. Also wanted a home that was far away from any kind of business or non-residential purposes to enjoy it. The entire surrounding area where this permit is proposed to be is nothing but single family homes and families with young children. The site does not have any kind of business or non-residential use for at least a half a mile in either direction, any direction of this proposed site. Now, along with just the usual concerns that we have of proposed usage of eight individuals as long, as well as counselors, visitors, relatives and so forth that have caused a congestion to this area, something that I think some of my other, uh, opponents are going to speak to. The loitering of, of individuals, the overall discontinuity of one of Omaha's most established historical neighborhoods by this use is a concern. And these are just some of the known negative effects that we have and there are far more unknowns. And the reason for that is that the petitioner, both in their application, as well as their lack of engagement to the neighborhood, they have not been able to engage us and tell us anything about what they're going to do, what the actual services are that they're going to provide, the counseling, the oversight, any of those things. And they haven't actually provided any more of that again today. You know, and, and this is evident as is put in by your own packet that was given to you by the city of Omaha with the recommendations that they've made to you for approval. When it goes into and it says land use and planning, small group living facility requirements, that's also under Omaha's, uh, Municipal Code fifty-five dash seven-six-three D. And it has the following conditions that are required on there. And the ones that I want to focus on, not necessarily the house and the, the breakdown of the house and the specifics and the logistics of where they live, but first of all, the names and addresses of individuals and organizations expected to be operating and providing services in this, uh, small living group use, if any. They have identified three individuals. One of them is here. Larry Nicholson, Jr., Michael Gunter are the executive director and program director. As he said, he lives at nine zero one nine Monroe Road in Plattsmith, Nebraska. By Google Maps, that is twenty-eight miles away from the point of site where he used to be working and that's thirty-six miles drive from Google, or, but according to Google Maps. The house manager, Rick Quinnlin, is set to reside at nine zero one North Twenty-Fourth Street in Council Bluffs. That's eight miles away and twenty minutes by traffic, according to Google Miles. And that'll come more important when I get back to what I want, another issue here. It also requires a description of services that's contemplated to be provided to residents of the small group living, group living use, if any. The submitted operations plan does not, does note that they will provide services. However, the operations plan does not clearly note when and where these services will be provided, what is offered, whether there'll be therapy conducted onsite. They've basically told you nothing about what they're actually going to do. The maximum number of staff that would be involved in, in the provision of services to the residents of the small group living site, again, they quote those same three individuals, all of whom live, live at least twenty minutes away. The number of non-residential individuals expected to visit the small group living you, living use each day, whether those individuals will come by motor vehicle and the average length of stay. Non-residential visitation information has not been provided. Additional information, uh, on the site must be provided along with visitation and hours. They've given you no indication of how they expect the traffic flow and the people flow in and out of this house will be. Subsection eight certifications, credentials, accreditations, or other similar acknowledgements awarded to individuals or organizations. Additional certifications have not been provided. They provided nothing to show that they have additional certifications for these programs. The name, address and local phone number of a designated contact who can be reached twenty-four hours a day if the need should arise. Again, the three individuals that you have been given as part of the providing of the service of this live a collective hundred miles away, not directly, but they each live, each those miles away, and they're not able to be there when there are eight adult males suffering from drug addiction in their house to be able to respond to any concerns that they have. So because of this and the lack of information that we've received, the lack of information that's remained to the board, we had to do our own somewhat investigation into what it is that this place actually does. So, and how do I click this on? Okay. So when you go to their application, and this is their application that they have here, and of course it shows typical things, name, vote, you know, address, marital status, all of those kinds of things. But when you click into this and you look into this further, it asks additional questions such as, do you have protection orders? Were you ever incarcerated? Do you have any pending criminal charges? Are you currently incarcerated? Do you have a parole hearing? Are you currently on parole or probation? Do you have a history of violence or have you ever been classified as violent? These are some of the questions that are part of the application. So without any So without anything for our community to be able to go on, that raises significant additional questions to us about this area. What type of offenders are going to be housed there? Are they going to be violent, nonviolent? Are they drug offenders only? Are they going to have sexual offenders in there? This house is located six blocks directly south of Rose Hill Elementary and six blocks directly north of Harrison Elementary. The other question, how does the organization determine admission and collect information on its applicants? How are these individuals vetted? Are they court ordered to be there? Will there be security on site? How will the residents be monitored? And how do three people who live twenty and thirty-eight minutes away from, are there to react to immediate security concerns with eight adult males with drug addiction issues? And they had said here that they don't, a lot of the people in here that don't have homes, don't have places to go to. When they, when these people are removed from this home, where are they going to go? What are their outlet concerns for taking people that are out of the program? Are they just going to be removed from the house with nowhere else to go? Board members, this is just not the right place for this type of special use permit in this neighborhood. I find it concerning that they haven't given you guys the application and the information that you need to understand what they actually do here. And I think it's evident of an indifference to a lot of us who have spent significant amounts of physical, emotional, and financial investment in a beautiful neighborhood of Omaha that we take a lot of pride in and living. I ask that the board deny this application, recognize the nineteen individuals who have signed this petition as well, also asking for denial, and push forward that same recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham.
Yes, yeah.
So you've been there since two thousand fifteen, they've been operating there for two years. Did you know that they've been operating there for two years?
I had known that there was a house down there. I had known that there was a religious affiliation down there. Had I known that, did I know they were in any way, shape, or form operating a halfway house? No.
Have you had any, have you had any issues with them?
As of right now, no.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Michael Coyle, five hundred Energy Plaza. And I'm here, I'm appearing here this afternoon on behalf of a resident of two zero one nine North Fifty-Sixth Street. Here is the subject property. And I'm appearing, and just for the record, the gentleman who just spoke lives right here. So this house is three houses away from the subject property. Now, before I start here, Dr. Lassiter, I want to say to you, thank you for your service to the community and thank you for what you're doing. I'm going to object to your proposal here today. But the men and women that you serve, it's noble. But we don't believe that this is the appropriate location for a halfway house. Now, I want to just show the North Fifty-Sixth Street. This is standing on the corner of Fifty-S sixth and Blondo with the camera pointed to the north. This is the, this is the western boundary of the Country Club neighborhood. And Country Club, you know, I'm born and raised in Omaha, lived in Dundee, grew up in Dundee, went to Dundee Elementary. When we talk about the powerhouse, Country Club has withstood the test of time of a hundred years of being one of the finest neighborhoods in Omaha. These are single-family dwellings where folks take pride in their home. There are beautiful trees. These are photos that are actually taken on the street, pointed towards the direction of Blondo Street. As you can see, again, it's notable for this neighborhood of Country Club because it has the brick pavers that were there when the Omaha Country Club, when folks actually played golf there. These homes have been preserved in wonderful condition. And you're going to hear, I think, from some of the other homeowners. I will tell you that just this year, this home here, which is about four doors from Dr. Lassiter's operation, sold for nearly six hundred thousand dollars just a couple of months ago. So these are significant values. And just a couple other photos that I want to talk about that I think are important for your consideration here. Here is another photograph. Now, this is standing on the corner of Fifty-S sixth and Blondo, the camera is pointed to the north. And let's talk about why I don't think that this is an appropriate location under the standards from the city and the statute. Let's go back to this photo right here. This is the application. This is Blondo Street that goes to the east and the west. And then you have North Fifty-S sixth Street here. And there's Burdette right here. Now, if you look at these pictures of these homes, these are all single-family dwellings that have either a single car garage. So if you have more than one car, it has to be parked on the street. And the parking here, from here to here, is where all of these one, two, three, four, five, six homes have to put a car. If they have somebody over for company or one of your kids has a car, you might have to park on the street. Now, I want to go back to, Mr. Morris, your question is, is that? In answer to your question, as far as the timing is concerned, this particular home was purchased, the house at fifty-six oh eight Blondo was purchased on March twenty-one of two thousand twenty-one. So the house has only been there for a year and five months. And in fact, I will tell you that my client will tell you, they had no idea these people were here. They had no idea about this operation. And if you look in your packet, you will find that they made an application to the city planning department back in March of two thousand twenty-two. We had absolutely no information about this. Dr. Lassiter, I understand you had an open house. None of the neighbors that we talked to knew about such an open house. Mr. LaRoco just spent some time at the last group talking about the importance of a community meeting. There has been none. I have been scrambling since Monday of last week when we got the letter for the very first time, even knowing that there was going to be a group home for recovering addicts in the Country Club neighborhood. I traveled to city planning. I spoke to one of Mr. LaRoco's colleagues. We asked for the recommendation, we got it on Sunday. We have had no idea about this operation. Now, let's go back to the issues that we can identify in addition to what you've already heard. Just to set the scene, here's Blondo, here's Fifty-S sixth. Let's look at some actual photos. Here is the home that Mr. Hughes purchased about eighteen, seventeen months ago. This is the home that we're talking about. Now, when you talk about zoning and families that are buying homes, I think they're entitled to go into a neighborhood knowing what's going on. You're going to hear from a resident here in a moment that bought their house within a month. So going back to this sheet right here, they purchased this home in, they purchased this home in March of two thousand twenty-one, knowing full well it's an R four family residential neighborhood. Now, if you purchase a piece of property and there's a vacant lot next to it or blighted property next to it, then I think that you've got to be prepared for whatever is going to go on that property. But if you purchase a piece of property in an R four, single-family dwelling, then I don't believe that you should expect that there's going to be a group, a group home for addicts. And again, we applaud the work of the Second Mile. We just respectfully suggest that this is not an appropriate location. And not just because we don't want these folks, it doesn't comply under the statute. Now, let's go back to the house. There is no parking on Blondo Street. So that's a sign that is in front of the Second Mile property. And then, on Blondo. So you cannot park on Blondo, Mr. Page. And on either side, there is no parking. This is a photograph that was taken on the other side. Now, unbeknownst to us, they had a meeting with city planning in March of two thousand twenty-two, and they raised this parking issue. So here's a picture of the side of the house. The Omaha City Planning Department let them put another driveway. Now it goes directly onto Fifty-S sixth Street. Now, the reason that I point that out to you is going back to the plot. That has taken parking off of Fifty-S sixth Street because going back to what you just heard, here's a picture that shows the camera on Blondo Street going to the north. There is simply no parking because from here, this is a picture right here, there is absolutely no parking on Blondo Street. So that means one hundred percent of the folks that visit this place are going to have to park on this street in front of these people's homes. And I will tell you, you're going to hear from a neighbor here in a second that they've been shocked that there has been virtually no place to park. Because when you put eight men in a two thousand square foot piece of property and three counselors, they're all driving. And when you, when you hit milestones on addiction and you have celebrations and people come, and you should. I've worked with addicts and I've worked with people in substance abuse. And these are programs where you have groups that get together, you discuss, you celebrate achievements. Thirty-day medallions, a year, a sobriety. We applaud the work. But there is simply no room in this particular area for this. Now, I want to go back to, because this is the application that was filed. And we knew nothing about Second Mile because we hadn't talked to them. We downloaded the application off of the internet. And as you've already seen, they are looking for individuals who are incarcerated, have pending criminal charges, whether they're currently incarcerated, whether they are, what housing unit or correctional facility they're in, what are their drugs or choice? And do they have a history of violence? And what are the triggers for their violence? Now, I will stand here and applaud the work of Second Mile every day of the week. But you cannot buy a house with the expectation that you can open a halfway house in the middle of Country Club. Now, you're not going to do it in Dundee. You're not going to do it in the beautiful Memorial Park neighborhood. It's not going to happen in Regency. Now, I understand, one of my colleagues went to the pre-meeting because I was in a deposition this morning. And she wrote down some of the comments from the, from the, from the pre-meeting that they only need to do this because, I understand that they were surprised at the lack of detail in the permit. There is zero detail of who's going to come there, who's going to qualify. Do they have a history of violence? These are single-family dwellings. And, Mr. LaRoco, I tried to visit with you. Oh, I'm sorry, is Mr. LaRoco here? You threw me off there, sorry. We, I tried to have conversations. I've never spoke to anybody at city planning. And there's never been a meeting with the neighbors on this matter. And if, if you look at the application, it says, which really surprised me that this was on the disposition docket here today. It says right on here that the submitted operations plan does not clearly note when and where these services will be offered, whether there will be therapy sessions. We don't have any information on the number and types of visitors permitted. But we know that as far as the application process is concerned, you can be incarcerated and be in a halfway program. And I think that the neighbors are entitled to know. There are children up and down the block. So I don't believe that they have complied with the statutory scheme and the ordinances. And I want to put this as, this is, this is the ordinance for R four. And these types of uses are allowed. We're here today for a small group living, non-disabled, special use permit. It requires this board's recommendation to the city council and then the city council to approve it. And in order to do that, you have to also follow the criteria from table fifty-five eight-eight-five. Criteria that this board follows to protect. This criteria is intended to protect residential neighborhoods and encourage developments which minimize adverse effects on the surrounding properties in the community at large. And I, listen, I, I want to make it really clear, I applaud the work that they're doing. And I think all these folks here today in opposition do. But this is not the appropriate location for this. Now, there are two areas from the application. It says, if personal services are to be provided to residents, the applicant shall provide appropriate documentation of any history of providing these at other locations. You don't have that. Any provision of services, and here we're trying to help men and potentially women achieve sobriety, get on with their life, whatever reason they're going to be there. But any provision of services to residents of the use shall not adversely impact residents of the use, surrounding properties, the residents and owners of surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. That's the factors, that's the law. That's the template that needs to be applied here today. So I, at a minimum, even looking at the application that was prepared by city planning, I don't, Mr. Fanslaw, I think, was copying on some of the emails I had. I've never, we've never spoke to anybody from Dr. Lassiter's church or organization. I think the neighbors are entitled. I think folks need to know if these men and women are sex offenders, if they're violent, if they're, if they're drug addicts. I think at a minimum, I think we would want that and we would ask you for that. But I, in all due respect, they bought it knowing it was a residential neighborhood. They took the risk when they, when Mr. Hughes bought this property for Dr. Lassiter and his group, that they, we're not going to get approval for this. And that should not bear on the neighbors. And the only information that we've been able to find means that they are seeking, you, you received no clarification from your questioning today that these aren't violent offenders or drug addicts or people that could pose a danger to the neighbors. So I would ask that you deny it. And if you're not going to deny it, then I'd ask at a minimum that you lay this over for sixty days and Dr. Lassiter and his team sit down with the neighbors and answer legitimate questions that, not going to try to step on your toe here, Mr. Fanslaw, but I don't think were answered in this application. It's incomplete, it was noted at your pre-meeting. And I think that we're entitled to answers. So I.
Mr. Coyle, so you brought up the, I think it was the county assessor's
Yes.
information there. Who's the, who's the title owner of record?
Well, this Mr. Hughes is the owner. And apparently, for what Dr. Lassiter said, is that the person, Mr. Hughes, bought this property, it says right here, he bought this property, this Timothy Hughes, and I don't know who he is. Apparently a member of Dr. Lassiter's church. This property wasn't even purchased until March twenty, March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. So they haven't, they haven't even been in there, what, fourteen, fifteen months? And I mean, Mr. Hughes can lease this property to a family. But what they've done is, is since they have, it's a terrible property for this because they have no access to parking on Blondo Street, one hundred percent of the burden lies on the neighbors to the east. And I'm telling you, there's eight people that are living there and three people that are directors there, Mr. Page. Fifty-sixth Street between Blondo and Burdette, I think that the people who live there are entitled to have parking.
Yes, and on Fifty-S sixth Street, I think I saw from that one of those pictures that you showed there, is there only parking on one side of the street, Fifty-S sixth Street?
Yes, yes.
And Blondo has no parking on either side?
And Blondo has no parking on either side, so one hundred percent, I don't know why this isn't focusing.
It focuses automatically.
Did I do something wrong? Oh, thank you. So you can see here, this is just a photo that was taken. You can see all the cars that were parked. A hundred percent of the traffic has to go between Blondo and and Burdette. And so this single residence whose driveway was on Blondo, apparently they allowed them to put a driveway that goes onto Fifty-S sixth, which is going to take away all the parking for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different residences. And again, with these tiny one-car garages, I grew up in, I lived in Dundee. When I first got married, we lived in Dundee. You always end up putting a car on the street.
Michael, if, if, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the parking. If that was rented to a family of five or six that had three teenage drivers, you're getting into a parking issue as well. So I understand your points, but I don't think just that parking issue is the entire, entire deal.
I think it's, I think it's, I agree with you. It's a major factor. But here, we're going to have eleven men, adult men. Now, they said it's a hundred and seventy-six feet per man. I know that the rooms, I mean, these are very tiny. This is a nineteen hundred square foot house. This is a 1,900-square-foot house.
I, I'm familiar with that neighborhood. I, I know what you're saying, so...
So I, I, and I think it's not just the parking, I think it goes back to the factors that we put in. And, and again...
I understand.
When they bought this house, they knew it was a residential neighborhood, so this isn't like, the people who bought houses should expect this to happen. But I've talked a long time, I appreciate all your courtesy. Thank you.
Eric, can, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you or anyone at the city speak to what's allowable for a four-person residential treatment facility?
Well, so, as it exists today, it's a single-family residence, which allows three unrelated people to live in a home, not four. So, the definition of small group living, I'll just read it here for the benefit of everyone. And so there's two classifications, one is disabled and one is non-disabled. So, I'll start with small group living, non-disabled, since that's the request. A dwelling unit housing, on a weekly or longer basis, at least four, but no more than eight unrelated persons, not including resident managers or house parents, not defined as a family, and not qualifying as a small group living disabled. So, small group living disabled is basically the same, but it's eight, between four, at least four, but no more than eight unrelated persons living with a handicap. So there's just a small differentiation between the two. As it exists today, there should only be three unrelated people living in the home. Does that answer your question? I, I have a lot of things here, but I'd like to get through all the opponents first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or did, or do you want me to elaborate a little bit further?
Well, I think there was some concern about, you know, from the applicant, that they've been operating already...
Yep.
Kind of unbeknownst to the rest of the neighborhood. And I guess I just wanted it clarified, whether or not they were operating within, I guess, the bounds of, you know, a four-person residential treatment facility or not, regardless of whether the neighborhood knew that they were doing that.
We will give them the opportunity to respond.
So, so, I will say that small group living disabled, so, disabled can mean several things, and I'm not gonna get to all the classifications, because I don't know all the federal law and who's protected class. But I can say that people that are living with or recovering from an addiction are classified by the federal government as disabled. Small group living disabled is a permitted use in this zoning district. So there could be eight people, all living with a handicap...
Right now.
Right now.
Okay.
That would be permitted, and we would not be before this board. My understanding is that the applicant wanted to keep it open-ended, in case there were individuals that did not qualify as being disabled.
Yeah.
So that is my understanding.
That clarification for all of us, yeah.
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Nate Coyle. I, I live at 2019 North 56th Street, just three houses down from the proposed special permit. I just have a few comments, won't take more than a minute or two of your time, I appreciate everyone's time. So firstly, I was born and raised in Omaha, I moved to the East Coast, and then spent a big chunk of my life in San Francisco. I decided to come home to raise a family in 2021. So I bought a home, 2019 North 56th Street, in April of 2021, after some vigorous research, because the, the safety and the history of the Country Club neighborhood was something that was really attractive to me. I just learned that the Second Mile home was purchased one month prior to my transaction, with the intention of applying for the special permit. So that's, that was news to me. I, I did a lot of research, and it was important to me that it was all single-family homes in the surrounding area, when I chose to, to purchase the home. Again, similarly to, to other folks, I do applaud what the Second Mile organization is doing, I think it's great, and it's really important work, but I have two concerns that, that I'd like to raise to, to all of you. So, the, the parking piece, having, having lived there, neither of my cars, my, my wife's car and my car fit in our garage. It's a very small home, so we both have to park either in our small driveway, which our cars don't fit, and we end up having to park at least one car on the street every, every night. As it stands today, I, I drive up and down the street trying to find parking for, for one of our cars. So, the, the, the idea of having another seven, eight people with cars parking on our street every night, and having to fight for parking right in front of my own home, is, is something that would be, would be a problem for us. And then secondly, we're, we're frankly just a little bit worried about the lack of detail in this, in this application, about who's gonna be living in this group home. We, we ran into some, some serious issues in San Francisco, we were robbed, our, our home was, was robbed there, and the, the Second Mile organization is not giving details about who's gonna be living in these, these eight rooms, just three houses down from us. On their marketing materials, as you saw, they're, they mentioned that the remission rate for, for folks recovering from, from a drug addiction is, is over 85%, and we just don't feel safe being three houses down from that. And lastly, I just wanna say, I wasn't invited to any spring meet and greet, I, I would have gladly gone to that, to, to get to know your organization. I don't know if there was a miscommunication, but I didn't receive anything in the mail. I know none of my neighbors did, because I've been talking to a lot of my neighbors about this as well. So, any information about this petition was only shared and, and received by anyone that I know six days ago. So we've been scrambling to try to respond to this for the past six days, and I, I too would ask for the board to deny this application.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Birch Kealey, B-U-R-C-H-K-E-A-L-E-Y. I live at 2008 North 55th Street, 68104. I bought my house 21 years ago. My son is headed off to college next month, and he was born and raised there. I walk, and drive, and ride a bike. My primary means of getting to my work on campus at the University of Nebraska at Omaha is to either bike or ride. I travel on Blondo to that intersection to cross, or if I'm coming north up 56th Street to go home. I, I was aware of the organization creating this group home. I have four cameras on my property. I can't speak specifics, and I, again, like the others, I, I am applauding their efforts. They're new at this, and I think they're perhaps growing too fast, that they're expecting us to bear some of the cost. Let me go back to the cameras. There is more wandering around in the neighborhood, more visibility of stuff. Nothing's wrong, nothing's happened, but we, you know, we're watching TV and a camera goes off, and we don't know the people, whereas we used to always know our neighbors. I'm not sure if I live quite close enough, I'm one house away, you know, I'm facing 55th. So, I never received any information about this program. I'm not sure if I necessarily had a right to, but since I'm within the city zone, I received a letter. I, I think, one last observation, I'm a university faculty member, so I ramble, I apologize. I, I noticed the plat that was submitted, that I received in the mail, showed that they were going to open a driveway that was about 12 feet wide. I believe it's more than 12, based on the pictures I've seen in the, when I noticed it, and it looks to be like, is it 20 feet wide? Was it planned for 12, and now it's 20, they've taken up 20 feet of the driveway? So I, I wanna speak specifically, though, my biggest objection that I, after reading the city charter, et cetera, that I feel like, I, I have a standing to say, is despite their assertions about there being enough parking on that property, that intersection is a bad intersection to travel through, either going north or south, or to make a right or left off of Blondo, to go up 56th Street, because there is, the only parking for the house on the east corner, the, the northeast corner of 56th Street is on Blondo, and it's a very small driveway. That's a rental house, two to three people have lived in there together at times, so there's always, never more than one car in the driveway, two cars on 56th Street. So, I've been walking this neighborhood for more than 20 years. If, if you're trying to go up, across Blondo, up onto 56th Street, traffic, because of all the cars that end up being parked on the west side of 56th Street, you, it, it's real kind of risky, because there's not, once someone gets down probably about your house to start heading south, and someone's trying to come north, there's no place for anybody to go. School buses in the morning, so adding this amount of traffic just makes no sense to me. I apologize if I ramble too much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Virg. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Pastor, would you like to come up and address some of the concerns that have been expressed?
Thank you. First of all, I, I do appreciate all of the program's neighbors and the concerns that they've expressed.
We have to say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ralph Lassiter, 2602 North 24th Street. Thank you. Again, I appreciate your concerns. Our desire is to, as I mentioned before, to be good neighbors, and if anything, to add to property values, not decline from them. I took some notes as our neighbors express their concerns, and, and I'll just try to reply to those as I capture them, and then I'll answer any questions that you might have in response to their concerns. I, I think first and foremost, let's talk about our residents, those who are participating in the program. I appreciate the individuals providing a copy of our admission application, and they highlighted those parts of the application that allow for us to screen individuals out of the program who are not appropriate. For example, individuals who are on the sexual offenders list are not eligible for the program. Individuals who are currently addicted to drugs or alcohol are not admitted into the program. Our concern is safety for our residents, as well as safety for the neighbors.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Real quick. So, it's on the application...
Yes.
And they can answer yes or no...
Yes.
...on the application, but do you do anything to verify the information on the application?
We have interviews with the referring agency, and we verify the content of that application in terms of their responses. So if an individual indicates that, let's say that, one of the questions is, what is your trigger? Essentially, that's helpful information, because if their trigger is stress as a result of employment issues or personal relationship issues, we wanna make sure that their personal action plan includes strategies will ensure that those triggers aren't activated. That's absolutely critical.
And if, if I remember, one of the questions is, what is your drug of choice?
Yes.
If they answer methamphetamines...
Yes.
What do you do?
That doesn't mean that their current drug usage includes methamphetamines. It simply is asking, what in the past has been your drug of choice?
And do you do drug screening?
We probably have the most thorough level of drug screening of any program. If an individual, if an individual tests positive for alcohol or drugs, and our drug testing includes all of the current street and other drugs, as well as, as marijuana and alcohol. So an individual can't even use THC that's sold at the, the green stores, the weed stores that are popping up all over the place.
And you mentioned, if they're a sex offender, they're not eligible. Can you list some other conditions for them not to be eligible, especially if they pertain to sort of like legal...
So, so some of the questions relate to violent offenses in their backgrounds. Individuals who, who've been convicted of violent offenses are initially, our basic expectation is that they would not be admitted. Now naturally, we would consider the details of, of that offense. When did it occur? What was their age? What was the nature of the offense? But generally, we don't accept individuals who have a violent criminal history. We asked on the application whether individuals have protection orders, either against them, or whether they have protection orders against others, because we wanna be aware of that. And if the individual is meeting all of those requirements, or is required to meet tho, meet those requirements, we wanna make sure that they are met.
Professor Lassiter, can you go into some more detail about the qualifications of the staff that's in charge of the management and operations of the facility?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I'll probably have Larry to come up and talk a little bit about his own background, where he's worked, the certifications that he holds. I, I think, first of all, it's important to, to share with our neighbors and with you that this is not a therapeutic program. This is not a traditional treatment program, because individuals who are in this program, they have completed treatment. Our objective is to build skills, and so the activities that occur to do so are in-house classes. So there are two to three workshops that our participants, our program residents participate in each week, whether it is money management, whether it is developing and maintaining good personal relationships, or whether it has something to do with their growth as a faith-based disciple. And Larry, would you like to come up and just talk about your qualifications, as well as those of others who serve in the program?
My name is Larry Nicholson, 1919 Monroe Street, Platteville, Nebraska. So the guys that, that take in help with this program...
Talk about yours first.
Okay, mine, I started doing drugs when I was 12 years old. I quit when I was 52 years old, I'm 57 now. I went and, went to a faith-based recovery program called Freeway Ministries in Omaha, where I was there for 11 months, served as house lead for nine months, so I started seeing a need for a second step. After completing that, I moved out on my own and had some successful independent living, and they asked me to come back for a one-year internship, how to run a Christian discipleship program, which I completed and did. And then I got a job at Centerpoint Campus for Hope in the dual diagnosis part of the program, where you stayed for nine months. And I facilitated three groups in there, and started learning case management, I'm a med aid, and did that, and then I got a job at the Open Door Mission, which I am at now, and I'm an aftercare case manager, where I work with guys daily, the same way we do at Second Mile. We're trying to provide life skills. We're not a halfway house, we're not a three-quarter-way house. Halfway houses, three-quarter-way houses have, either go to three to five meetings a week, you have no curfews, you have no programming, you can have overnights, you can bring women to them and stay overnight, we are not that program. We are a Christ-centered program that are taking and taking guys, and are gonna be women to come, and we're turn, and we're helping them become successful, independent people, community advocates, people that serve in the local churches, fathers, brothers, husbands, and, and that's our goal. The way that we bring people in, that's why that application asked that stuff, 'cause it's vetted, that we're used to vetted, we vet very hard. We have a list of people that wanna come in, we have a list of recommendations of people that wanna come in. We are at the legal limit right now, and we've done everything by the books, from insurances on our house, our house is overinsured, we're insured. The driveway started out at 25 feet wide, which they approved, we narrowed it, we take up one parking spot on 56th Street. Every person that comes to our program, a lot of them don't drive, every vehicle will fit in that parking place that we have now, to keep from having to park on the streets. And the people that, the neighbors that live right to the east of, west of us, and right behind us, love the guys, love what's going on, they see a value in it, you know, we wanna be the beacon of light on that corner. And back in April, I did, I fanned it out, over 100 flyers. I didn't mail them, I went door to door, knocked three blocks down, three blocks up, three blocks everywhere, and if they didn't answer the door and talk to me, and were invited to this open house, I left it in their door handle, or in the door. So it, that was done, and that was asked by the city planning board as we applied for this permit, that has taken to us, to this point. So I, I just, and when people say they don't know the program is going on, I feel that we're doing our job. You know, the guys are working, they're gainfully employed, they stay in the houses, we're not, we have a curfew. You know, it's 11:30 at night, if you wanna smoke, we got a smoking destination, they're not out in front of the houses. We mow the grass, we've cut down dead trees, we've improved the, the property, and what that's doing is improving the life of the guys that live there.
And can you talk about the oversight?
Okay.
During the, the hours, and, and, and who's there?
Yes, we, we...
Is there someone there 24 hours a day?
Yes, we have an individual, individual leads there, and he is our, our house manager, and his name is Nick Edmonds. is Nick Edmonds. And Nick Edmonds is managed by Rick Quinlan, that lives in Council Plus, that's there three times a week. I stop in, I work at Open Door Mission. Yes, I live at Beaver Lake, I'm taking care of my eighty-year-old father that's sick right now, and I lived in the house from March until September to get it going. I stop in, and I make sure things are orderly in the house. We have surveillance cameras inside and out. On my phone, I can pull it up right now and see what the guys are doing. These guys are doing great. You know, their bosses have called me and said, thank you, you know, for sending these guys this way. We don't let criminals in, we don't want nobody with hard violence. We have sex offenders in our neighborhood that are registered. We have another housing that's six blocks away from us, that's a halfway house. We are not like that. We want to be the beacon of light on Fifty-Sixth and Blondo, and I believe that we're doing that, because really, we've been doing it for about a year. We just want to bring a couple guys more in, and, you know, get some more houses. So, we'll be in front of you guys again, probably discussing the same issues, but it's just living in that gap, you know? If you love the guys, and you want to help the community, it's inside of that gap what's really happening. You get started here, if you ain't gotten over to go. And we like the neighborhoods, nicer neighborhoods, because it is the second step. We want these guys to come, and women and children to come to a nice home, that they learn to take care of. I've got to stop, but yeah.
I have a question?
Yes.
For either one of you. Why request the non-disabled? Sounds like most everyone is disabled?
Yeah. And some are not, though we've had.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the objectives is to not stigmatize the residents of this program in any way. Yes, you're right, we could have taken the, you know, the disabled route, but for a couple reasons. One, we don't want to stigmatize the residents. And second of all, we want to be open to the neighborhood. We want them to know what's going on, and we want to make sure that we've had sufficient oversight and review of our program plan, so that we're not going to make a misstep. Our desire is, again, to be good neighbors.
Okay. I was just curious to make sure there wasn't, you know, crossing communication as far as what's being done, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate the honesty on that.
I have another question. Are you both open to an attempt to reengage the neighborhood, to express a little bit more clearly what your program overview is? Because even today, I mean, there's, I still think that there's probably questions in the room about what exactly is going to take place there, and so maybe it would benefit, if this were laid over, give you time to discuss your scope of work, what you have planned with your neighbors?
Absolutely. If the neighbors, and it sounds like there's a matter of not being fully aware, although I think it's significant that the program has been in operation with three to four individuals, including the house manager, for almost a year, and individuals weren't aware of it. I think that indicates that we are meeting one of our objectives, which is to not be ablite, to not be of concern, to not create issues that would cause our neighbors to be concerned about crime, loitering, things of that nature. But yes, if you all thought that that would be of value, we would definitely be open to doing so. I'll just share with you that reducing, should I say, lengthening the time, does have an impact on our financial operations, because currently, the bills are paid by the small contributions that residents make, and consequently, by increasing, you know, the capacity, we're able to actually provide more services to them.
Pastor Lassiter, are you getting any current?
Resident funding from the state?
No.
No?
And one follow-up question I have, then, is, how long have you been operating out of this site?
Since September of last year.
September last year, so almost a year.
Almost a year.
And are you aware of anybody in your program that has drifted away from the program, caused any issues within the neighborhood, or otherwise? Are you aware of any of that?
No, sir, not at all. Exactly the neighbors to the west of us, and right behind us, the ones that are connected to our house, they just love the guys. The guy has a key to the house. Our house is open to the neighborhood, and whether they know it or not, now they do. There's nothing that we want to hide. We have a Bible study on Thursday night that the neighborhood could come to. I mean, we have, and they would, we just want to be the beacon of light. We've helped people move stuff, helped shovel locks, and helped mow grass when they're not around.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
The public comment period is closed.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'd like to say a few things. So, this request is not seeking a parking waiver. Parking is being met on the site. So, I know we talked a lot about parking, but there is no waiver being requested. Look, I understand these residential use types are not popular. We've seen it my time here at the city, Dave's time at the city, Mike's time, we've all seen it. We've had applications, we've heard, so I'm not naive. I just don't appreciate the insinuation that people dealing with or recovering from addiction are dangerous, you know? And this is a residential use type. I just, you know, there was a lot of, not in this neighborhood, not in this neighborhood, and, you know?
Didn't wear.
All types of neighborhoods have these types of facilities. We have them in Gold Coast, we have them throughout the city. And so, you know, I understand neighbors get concerned and worried of the unknown. You know, I'm not naive, but I just wanted to throw that out there. You know, this is a residential use type, it's not office commercial, they're meeting the parking requirements. There were two items that we need clarification on for the operating statement. It wasn't a poor submittal. There's a lot of items that come in for these types of operations, so we need provide clarification on the types and times of therapy services to be offered on the site, and then two, provide additional information on visitation. Okay? The only other item we needed was a revised site and landscape plan that provided some additional tree plantings, so that they're compliant with the street yard landscaping provision in the code. So, I understand if there's concerns about not meeting with neighbors, and if that's the way that the board wants, you know, to go down for a layover, or if there's concern with those two items that need to be clarified in the operating statement, I understand. But, you know, staff is comfortable with a recommendation for approval, and that's where ultimately we stand. So, I will read the recommendation, I can answer any questions from a city perspective, if there needs to be clarification on use types, or codes, or requirements, but staff recommends approval, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. I'll just make an editorial comment here first, before I can make a motion.
I have one, too, I'd like to make after you.
Okay. That's fine. No, we're closed.
Public is closed.
We're closed. I forgot where I was going, what I was going to say.
You're going to kick it off?
Yeah, you go ahead, and then I'll go. Hey, I'm getting old.
Me, too. The only thing, the only comment that I have to say, I also appreciate the neighborhood's concerns, because I'm still left with a little bit of unknown about what exactly they're doing there. It sounds like this is the goodwill of some faith institutions that have come together, and that's kind of, we've been talking about this for about an hour, and that's kind of what I know. And so, I do think there should be an opportunity to learn exactly what's going to happen there, and so I am not going to vote yes if the motion is to approve. I, my vote will be no. I would be supportive of a layover, I'm not going to deny. But I am really grateful, Eric, that you made the comments. There is a little bit of, you know, not in our neighborhood kind of sentiment here, and so, you know, the, I guess the implication is that, you know, a lesser neighborhood deserves this type of residence and deserves this type of program, and that's just something that I'm never going to be supportive of. And so, your concerns about the unknown, I get, but some of the other comments, I just think, you know, I just think you said it better than I'm saying it now. And so, I will be supportive of a layover, but denial or approval, I won't.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, are you ready? You guys are good.
And I'm going to disagree with you a little bit, respectfully disagree. I don't know what a layover does. You know, we lay over a lot of things, and sometimes I scratch my head and say, okay, what good is a layover going to do? I think that the communication has been there, or attempted to be there. I think that the testimony today was very good on both sides. I don't care which side, both sides were very good with the testimony. I totally agree with what Eric said as well, and I appreciate your comments, Eric, with regards to what you said. This is not a unique situation, we've seen it before many times, not a unique situation at all. It is allowed, and we have seen this, and they are all over the city. The program is a very valid program, and I applaud you for what you're trying to do. I just don't think that a layover would do any good. I think we just need to take action, and with that said, I am going to make the motion to approve, subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
I'll second that. Debbie, would you record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
No.
Moore?
No.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve four-two.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes our agenda. You all received the minutes of last meeting. I need a motion for the approval of the pre-meeting and the meeting notes.
Second.
Debbie?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yeah, yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six-six.
How about the pre-meeting notes?
That's what we just did.
Oh, that's all part of it.
Oh, I thought, okay, my mistake. Now, I need the meeting.
Second. Second. Okay.
Please record the vote.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Now, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
For enduring me.
Way to step in.
Yes, way to step in.